So I started this podcast about writing to help inspire young authors and anybody who needs help with their journey and their creative writing. I started something like this because I've been writing my whole life and I'm really passionate about it. And I just wanted to share my passion with others and get others interested, too. I have covered stuff like how to develop a good story, a good character, basically the five W's, who, what, when, or why. And I'm planning to cover more stuff of how to write like different genres of stories and how to make an effective like scary story or something. So I usually make the script two or three days from before and I try to make it nice. And then I go to my computer, I load up some editing software, and I start recording using my microphone. And then I just piece all the bits together and make the podcast. It means a lot because I'm glad that I can inspire the younger grades and even the high schoolers in other grades. And I can hope to continue doing this. What I always say to anyone who's struggling or just needs a little motivation, my motto is a little imagination goes a long way.
Today was our annual Walk to Hillsborough event. And we walked 12 blocks from Seminole Heights Elementary to Hillsborough High School to signify the years it takes to go from kindergarten through high school graduation. And we want our kids to set goals and realize that they can dream big and be whatever they want to be. And our fifth graders got a tour of the high school, so they were so excited to go to the high school and see what's going to be their future.
It just warmed my heart to know that this tradition has been kept alive. I know that my principal at the time, Dr. Ruth Ann Reynolds, bless her heart, she's no longer with us, but she's the one that allowed me to take the reins and do this and to keep this going. And I'm so excited to see that the administration continues to see how important and vital this is.
We have parents that have done the walk when they were students, and now their own children are doing the walk. We have many Hillsborough High School students that came up to us today and said, "I did the walk when I was at Seminole Heights Elementary, and that's why I came to Hillsborough High School." And so we're building graduates. Every time we do this, we're building graduates.
At Seminole, one of the best things we did every year was this walk. It was really fun to be able to see where I would end up eventually, bringing the kids in to Hillsborough for a tour. They were all looking up at the ceiling like, "Wow, it's so big." And it's just like, I remember the same feeling, this is, it's nice to see it again. I'm glad that I'm able to both take what I learned when I was younger and be able to give back to the younger kids now and to inspire them to persevere on their journey to graduate high school.
I'm Jessica Vaughn, Chair of the Hillsborough County School Board. You're watching Hillsborough Schools TV, and together, we're preparing students for life.
The board recognition meeting of December 2nd is now called to order. Member Combs will now lead us in a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Everyone, please, we will take a moment of reflection. Thank you. Now please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Member Combs. Let the record reflect that all board members are present, with the exception of Member Vaughn, and Member Rendon will be joining us shortly. As we begin this evening's recognition meeting, let us, let me quickly review the format for our recognition meeting. Please silence all electronic devices. At recognition meetings, we recognize our students, teachers, schools, community partnerships, among others, but we will not be approving items of business. Keep in mind that staff has worked hard trying to keep to a tight schedule, so that is, so this meeting flows smoothly and concludes timely. Board members, please keep your comments brief. The meeting will adjourn after the last recognition. If you, if any of you would like to photograph the students, please feel free to come up when, when called. Thank you for your participation in our recognition meeting. Now let's begin with the recognitions. First recognition, A02, recognition of the 25-26 Middle School Champions and the 25-26 Florida High School Athletic Association State Champions. Lanis Robinson, Director of Athletics, will highlight this recognition.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for having us. We do this three times a year with our fall, winter, and spring sports. We're holding out hope for one football team that is still playing. Armwood High School plays in the state semifinals this Friday night at Armwood at 7:30. But today, we're going to recognize our county champions and our middle school level in both the sports of basketball and volleyball. So without further, further ado, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Burchell, the Assistant Director of Athletics.
Thank you. We're going to start today with our middle school girls' basketball champions. I'd like to introduce Mr. Henry Lefler from Walker Middle School to introduce his coach and athletes.
Good evening, board members. Okay, we had a phenomenal season, eight and oh, and our girls really, really blended well. And our head coach, I wanted to thank, he's one of our parents, but he took the time and helped us out and really, really made a team that was undefeatable, perfect. And I'd like to introduce our head coach, Mr. Hall, Mr. Mark Hall. Some of our girls are currently at, there's a basketball game, the USF is playing against UConn, so some of our girls are attending that, that wonderful game. So I am going to name our, our kids, and they'll be coming up now. Emily Brody, Laura Hall, Coral Hernandez, Selena Hummel, Cheryl Katsoff, Stella Lingel, Rhea Midam, Harper Nails, Vivian Rooty, and Isabella Saldana. Aria Vasquez as well, I apologize. Last but not least.
Next are our boys' basketball middle school champions, and I must say, in all of my years, which has been a very long time of being in this job, this was probably the most exciting basketball game I have seen at the middle school level in a long time. Went into overtime. I would like to introduce Mr. Christian Finch from Eisenhower Middle School to introduce
Good evening, Superintendent Ayers and board members, and Ms. Burchell just stole my thunder because I was going to talk about how exciting that game was. We, our hearts were beating very fast at the end of that game, but it was a ton of fun. I'm so incredibly proud to introduce our coaches this evening. Our coaches not only coach young men to play basketball, but just to be great young men in general, and these young men represent the very best of what Eisenhower Middle School has to offer. And so at this time, I'd like to introduce our coaches, Coach White and Coach Cox.
Appreciate y'all having us. It was a great season. We're very honored to be here. Special shout out to Board Member, Mr. Washington. He was my principal at Chamberlain High School, and he's a part of the reason that I'm educated and also a coach, so I want to thank him. And now to the most important people, our team, we're going to start with Mr. Jelani Brown, Ramani Sinche, Aiden Daniels, Dylan Donaldson, Stephen Frey, Ricky Hunn, Jeriah Josephath, Giovanni Ortiz, Rick Salmon, Jonathan Segura, Caleb Tyler, and Amari Young.
Do the same thing outside.
All right, y'all, you ready? Three, two, one.
Okay, next we have our girls' volleyball winners, and I'd like to introduce Dr. Anthony Jones from Martinez Middle School to introduce his winning team.
All right, thank you for this opportunity, and very excited to announce that for only the second time in the middle school era, did the same school win, the boys and the girls, in the same sport and the same season. And that was Martinez Girls and Boys Volleyball this year, and so we're very excited about that. So I'm going to call up our coach, Mr. Matthew Moffett. Come on up, Coach. Coach Moffett is at, he teaches at McKittrick next door, but he's part of the Martinez family and is loved by our students and staff, and so I'm excited for him to get up here to announce both of his championship teams, along with Coach Norland, who could not be with us tonight. But again, Coach, take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Jones, for those kind words. What a season. I wish you guys could have seen these, these teams play, especially, sorry, boys, but those girls, they're incredible. I would say they're probably high school caliber team. They're, they're incredible. And in fact, I think they only lost one set the entire season, and that was the championship game. So we kind of went to three sets there, but they were phenomenal. And I'll talk about the boys in a minute, all right? But I'll introduce the ladies. We have Riley Connors, Bryn Bodu, Augustine Canilas, Rachel Chen, Amelia Dashner, Quinn Epstein, Lavender Farmer, Maria Isdith, Peyton Cantascus, Lily McCurdy, Myla Mobley, Madison Monday, Roman Morrison, Tess Pollack, Sadie Stabnow, Caitlin Whitney. And some of us could not be here tonight, they have club and other things to be at. But thank you, guys. You're absolutely right. Serves are so important. You get that right, it's all, it's all easy from there. All right, let me introduce the boys. Again, the boys' team. Now, there's not a lot of boys' volleyball, right? It's, it's just kind of putting athleticism together. And my goodness, this team, they were so much fun to watch and even more fun to coach. They did a phenomenal job. Again, only losing one set all year at the beginning of the season, got the quirks out of the way, and then it was just smooth sailing from there. So this team was also equally incredible. I would love to see the boys versus the girls, maybe we can set that up. All right, but to introduce the guys, here we got Cole Barndollar, Derek Beltran, Kealan Bowman, Drake Dashner, Isaiah Granger, Edison Granger, bros, Luke Mobley, Everett Moore, Jeremiah Peterson, Chase Shearer, Aiden Tieran, and Barrett Waters.
All right, everyone ready? Three, two, one. All right, stay right there. All right, gentlemen, stay right there. All right, everyone ready? All right, three, two, one. Keep smiling, three, two, one. All right, keep smiling, four.
Yes, just, that concludes our time. Just want to point out, we had 20 minutes on the clock. We did it in 15. I'm challenging Mr. Jargo to stay on pace.
Next, next recognition is A03, recognition of Career Technical and Adult Education Competition Awards recipient, Christopher Jargo. Director of Career and Technical Education would be highlighting this recognition.
Thank you, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent, staff. We always appreciate the opportunity to bring our Career Technical and Adult Education students and JROTC students here. And we're going to start with those students from the JROTC. You can see this large trophy going to come up, and these are students from Sickles High School. So go ahead and start making your way up here. Be very safe and careful with that trophy. All right, they are first place in the U.S. Air Force Precision Marksmanship Championships. We have Adriana Pagan, we have Kylie Tran, we have Laura Quick, and Arthur Santorio, of course supported by Principal Chris Deluloff, Colonel Robert Wright, and Master Sergeant William Robinson. Next up is our Army JROTC program. We'll bring up students from Alonzo High School. They were first place in the National Youth Leadership Conference. This is National Youth Civics Summit Competition. They're supported by their principal, Mr. James Harris, by Major Antonio Graffalo. Our students are Caroline Victoria and Isabel, just Caroline Victoria, one student here. Next up are Army JROTC students from Newsome High School. Let's bring up Isabel Rivera and Blake Jacobus. We are supported by Lieutenant Colonel Eric Deal and Principal Katie Rocha. The National Youth Leadership Conference, they were first place in the National Youth Civic Summit Competition. Moving on, next up is our HOSA, that's our Health Occupation Students of America, coming from Williams Middle School. Let's start with Erica Dutt. There's, now the students of Williams Middle School are supported by Principal John Haley and Instructor Celeste Wong. Erica Dutt was first place in the HOSA International Competition of Dynamic Decisions. In addition, for that competition, we have Davika Davuluri, we have Ria Abdul Khader, we have Anika Gangrade, and of course, we can bring up their principal and their instructor. That's our team for HOSA Dynamic Decisions. Continuing on from Williams, we're going to bring up another team. This team was first place in the International Competition in the Foundations of HOSA Bowl. Remember, HOSA is the Health Occupation Students of America. Let's bring up from Williams, Akanska Rudra, Soham Reo, Param Vaishya, and Ashni Patel. Once again, all of them, first place, Foundations of HOSA Bowl. We'll bring up their principal and instructor for a picture. Continuing on, the excellence from Williams Middle School, HOSA, we have students who were first place in the Health Careers Display. Let's bring up Apurva Kanteti and Tanishka Chinta Manemi. Next up from Williams, HOSA, the first place winner in the Health Career Preparation, Yana Moving on to our entrepreneurship, we work with the Network for Teaching, or this is the Network for Teaching, and random middle school student is going to come up. Let's bring up Adveka Mani. She's supported by the Nifty Teacher of the Year, Miss Tanya Delgado. Her random middle school principal is Colin Gerting, she's now in high school, so she's also supported by her high school principal, Miss Katie Rocha. She won the pitch competition at the Nifty National Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge. All right, also from our National Nifty Entrepreneurship Competition, let's bring up students from Alonzo High School, Chase Little and Michael Scanlon. Come on up, supported by Principal James Harris, Instructor Matt It's Nikhil Katiar, Ishan Sakamuri, and Saicharan Vutukuri. Congratulations, second place, National Conference. Also coming up from Middleton High School, our next group from that National Conference, they made third place in Entrepreneurship. Let's bring up Vihan Gouda and Rohit Viragoni. Congratulations. Next up is our winners in the Introduction to Parliamentary Procedures. Seventh place at the National Conference, let's bring up Sumed Prati, Middleton High School. Next up from Middleton High School, in the Help Desk Competition at the National Event, eighth place goes to Arv Maheshwari, Middleton High. Next up from Middleton High School, Network Design, ninth place was Sayed Faisal and Peter River. And one additional student from Middleton High School, ninth place in UX Design, let's bring up Manika Singh, User Experience Design, National Conference. Congratulations. Are there any students in the audience that may have come in late? Do you want to make sure?
I just wanted to say, the students for FBLA for Middleton, I just wanted to highlight their just amazingness. We have five of them that represent the district-level leadership team. We have Sumed Prati that represents the national team, and then all of them, except for one, are on my Middleton leadership team. So that is excellence in the making.
Thank you, everybody. I want to thank Mr. George Velez Colazo, our new staff member, for putting together all of our cards. He did a wonderful job. Thank you, Board members, for your support every day.
Thank you. The next recognition is A-04, recognition of the newly certified and renewed National Board Certified Teachers. Sabrina Gates, District Resource Teacher, Professional Learning, will be highlighting this recognition.
Good evening, Board members. Nationally, there is 133,444 teachers who have achieved board certification. In Florida, there's a little over 13,000, and 1,000 teachers from our district make up part of that 13,000. Currently, more than 20% of the active candidates in Florida are participating in our Aspire Program for Board Certification. Research shows that National Board Teachers have a significant impact on student learning gains and positively influence the instructional culture of their school sites. Teachers who participate in the certification process demonstrate commitment to elevating their professional practice, which is a tangible expression of their dedication to students and to our profession and our school district. Developing a portfolio takes effort, and sometimes takes three to four years to be able to complete. MBCTs seeking to keep their certification current requires creation of a portfolio also, evidencing professional learning and contributions that they have given to the profession after their initial certification. Some of our MBCTs have completed this twice, and some have done it three times. MBCTs, whether, whether you're an initial candidate or a maintenance of certification candidate, hours are spent thinking about your professional practice, talking with mentors and other candidates about your instruction and learning, and then writing about it. All of this contributes to your continued growth as an educator and to the contributions made to students, your school, and our district. Our district has a long history of supporting National Board Teachers in pursuit of this certification process. Our district recognizes this process as the most authentic and impactful professional learning experience a teacher can experience, and I can attest to that. This is my 37th year in this district, and I am National Board three times over, and every time I do it, I elevate my practice. So when we think about this, I don't stand alone. There's a lot of people in this gallery tonight, and for those of you who are upstairs at our reception, who have had this journey, who are on this journey, who are looking forward to this journey. And tonight, we're gonna recognize six educators, five teachers, and one school counselor, who are newly achieved initial candidates. We're also gonna be recognizing in name 13 of our National Board Teachers who went through the maintenance of certification process. I do want you to know that that process, that means you're a National Board Teacher who goes again, it is a different process because you prove something different, and it takes about 60 hours to be able to complete that process. Our initial candidates, they actually spend a considerable amount longer in theirs. So, here we go. Let's, let's hear our people, because the Lord knows, although I might be somebody who speaks professionally for a living, every single time I come to this meeting, I can't even hardly talk right. So here we go, here we go. I'm gonna call their names, and if they'll come forward, our initial candidates, they're gonna come up, and I'm gonna tell you two things about them. I'm gonna tell you what their certification is in, and I'm gonna tell you where they teach, as well as their name. And we're gonna start out with Barbara Cotto from Reddick Elementary. She has, she has earned her National Board Certification as an Exceptional Needs Specialist, specializing in early childhood through young adult. It's followed by Jennifer Crawford, who's not with us this evening, but she teaches at Wy Mama Elementary, and she has earned her certification as a Generalist in Early Childhood. Sharita Crowell is next, from North Tampa Success Center. She also is an Exceptional Needs Specialist, Early Childhood Through Young Adult. We're in the red. There we go. Sylvia Santana from Latto High School is our candidate who has earned her National Board in School Counseling. Danielle Topper from Lockhart Elementary, Literacy, Reading Language Arts for Early and Middle Childhood. Eileen Welsh from Ruskin Elementary, Exceptional Needs Specialist, Early Childhood Through Young Adult. So these six candidates all earned their initial certification, and we celebrate them, but we're gonna ask them to be joined by our Maintenance of Certification candidates next. Catlin Katie DeLucia from Grady Elementary, she has earned her MOC and continues as a Literacy, Reading Language Arts in Early and Middle Childhood. Jamie Galvin from Pinecrest Elementary, and she is a Generalist in Middle Childhood Education. Sally Henderson from West Tampa Elementary is also a Generalist in Middle Childhood. Lauren Herndon from Potter Elementary, Generalist, Early Childhood Education. Adam Plopper, Cypress Creek Elementary, his certification is in Mathematics, Early Adolescence. Sonia Lutz from Latto High School, English Language Arts, Adolescence and Young Adulthood. Caroline Octavani from Morton Elementary, she's a Generalist in Early Childhood. Elizabeth Pletcher from Alefiah Elementary, she is a Generalist in Middle Childhood. Carly Soto from River Hills Elementary is Library Media from Early Childhood through Young Adult. Maria Lee Torres Crosby from Memorial Middle School, English Language Arts, Early Adolescence. Marla Wagner from Lockhart Elementary, Mathematics, Early Adolescence. And Anita Vani, who gives her apologies sincerely, she's so brokenhearted, she is sick, 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 but she is the music teacher at Citrus Park Elementary, and she has also earned her MOC. So, in addition to recognizing all of these folks, we're gonna take a picture, I know. But in addition to that, I would like to recognize, if you are a National Board Certified Teacher in our district, please stand. If you are a candidate, I mean, if you are a National Board Certified Teacher who serves as a professional learning facilitator mentoring others to this process, wave your hand in the air. If you are a current candidate, either MOC or initial, please stand. And, and, very special, because this Saturday is score release day, and it makes us all gutted, whether we're getting it or not, you know, whether we know anything, it's, it's a tense day. And I'd like to recognize, we call this Candidates in Waiting, put both your hands in the air, candidate in waiting, there you go. They'll be finding out on Saturday. So, Board members, I just want you to know, this group is incredibly dedicated to putting their best foot forward for their students, for their schools, and for all of us in education here in Hillsborough County. So, thank you for recognizing them this evening.
All right, everyone ready? Three, two, one. Perfect, keep smiling. All right, move it fast, people, let's go. Hurry, 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 come on. We're OT, you know I talk too much. Here we go, here we go. Madonna, get in here.
Thank you.
All right, everyone ready? Three, two, one.
Thank you very much. The next recognition is A-05, recognition of Para-to Professional Pathway. Sarah K. Bondi, Manager of Human Resources, and Alora Spoto, District Resource Teacher, Human Resources, Performance Evaluation, Evaluation, and Clinical Education will be highlighting this recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Good evening, Honorable School Board Members, Madam Chair Perez, Superintendent Ayers, and District Staff. My name is Sarah K. Bondi, and I serve as the Department Manager for Human Resources, Clinical Education, and Performance Evaluation. It is my honor to stand before you this evening to highlight three recognitions that reflect the very best of our district's work to invest in the next generation of teachers. The three recognitions you will hear tonight represent how our district grows its own, supports its interns, and nurtures strong, long-term partnerships that benefit our students. Tonight, my role is to proudly introduce the work. My team will share the stories. To begin, we are honored to recognize our Para-to Professional Teacher Pathway. At this time, I would like to invite Aloris Spoto, my colleague and dear friend, District Resource Teacher for Performance Evaluation and Clinical Education, to share more about our esteemed honorees.
Good evening. Tonight, we have the privilege of recognize seven outstanding paraprofessionals who have completed their teaching degrees and joined us as new teachers in Hillsborough County Public Schools. Their achievements reflect an extraordinary level of dedication. Each of these educators balanced full-time work in our schools with university coursework, family responsibilities, and the many demands of daily life. Finishing a degree under those conditions is no small accomplishment. It's the result of commitment, resilience, and a deep belief in the importance of serving our students. This recognition also honors the school communities that supported them along the way, principals who encouraged their growth every day, teachers who mentored them, colleagues who stepped in to help and play a part, and their families who were enormous support to these paraprofessionals. These individuals represent what it means to grow your own, a community investing in its people, nurturing its talent, and strengthening the pipeline of future teachers. We are proud of each of you tonight and grateful for the schools that helped make this moment possible. Tonight, we celebrate your hard work, your perseverance, and your continued service to the students of Hillsborough County. So with your permission, I'd like to call up each paraprofessional and the administration that supported them through this process. We're gonna start with Abby Dewise. She's a USF grad. She's from Robinson Elementary. She's currently a kindergarten teacher, and her principal, Timothy Delgado, is here supporting her tonight. And with your intelligence, we have all our National Board people have a picture with you. All right, move it fast, people, let's go. Hurry, 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 come on. We're OT, we know I talk too much. Here we go, here we go. Madonna, get in here. All right, everyone ready? Three, two, one. Perfect.
The next recognition is AAO five, Recognition of Para-to Professional Pathway. Sarah K. Bondi, Manager of Human Resources. And Elora Spoto, District Resource Teacher, Human Resources, Performance Evaluation and Clinical Education will be highlighting this recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Good evening, Honorable School Board Members, Madam Chair Perez, Superintendent Ayers and District Staff. My name is Sarah K. Bondi and I serve as the Department Manager for Human Resources, Clinical Education and Performance Evaluation. It is my honor to stand before you this evening to highlight three recognitions that reflect the very best of our district's work to invest in the next generation of teachers. The three recognitions you will hear tonight represent how our district grows its own, supports its interns, and nurtures strong, long-term partnerships that benefit our students. Tonight, my role is to proudly introduce the work. My team will share the stories. To begin, we are honored to recognize our para-to-professional teacher pathway. At this time, I would like to invite Elora Spoto, my colleague and dear friend, District Resource Teacher for Performance Evaluation and Clinical Education, to share more about our esteemed honorees.
Good evening. Tonight, we have the privilege of recognize seven outstanding para-professionals who have completed their teaching degrees and joined us as new teachers in Hillsborough County Public Schools. Their achievements reflect an extraordinary level of dedication. Each of these educators balanced full-time work in our schools with university coursework, family responsibilities, and the many demands of daily life. Finishing a degree under those conditions is no small accomplishment. It's the result of commitment, resilience, and a deep belief in the importance of serving our students. This recognition also honors the school communities that supported them along the way. Principals who encourage their growth every day, teachers who mentored them, colleagues who stepped in to help and play a part, and their families who were enormous support to these para-professionals. These individuals represent what it means to grow your own, a community investing in its people, nurturing its talent, and strengthening the pipeline of future teachers. We are proud of each of you tonight and grateful for the schools that helped make this moment possible. Tonight, we celebrate your hard work, your perseverance, and your continued service to the students of Hillsborough County. So with your permission, I'd like to call up each para-professional and the administration that supported them through this process. We're going to start with Abby Dewise. She's a USF grad. She's from Robinson Elementary. She's currently a kindergarten teacher and her principal Timothy Delgado is here supporting Abby is part of our group from USF who, as they're going through school, become para-professionals in their last two or three semesters and then graduate and we hope move right into a position which you see here. You're also going to see that every para-professional tonight ended up becoming employed as a teacher where they did their clinical work and where they were para-professionals. So that's amazing. I'd like to call up Amanda Miyoshi, also from USF and part of that group. She's from Bloomingdale High School. She is now an Access Points ESE teacher and she's supported by Marcos Rodriguez, her Now I'd like to bring up from St. Leo University, Sarah Melgoza from Knights Elementary, currently teaching grade one with Dr. Janine Hall as her principal. I also want to share that Dr. Hall is a frequent flyer in supporting para-professionals. I don't know, she's got a factory going on, but it's a good factory and it builds the teachers in her school. I also want to share that Sarah has a sister Emily, who you recognized a couple of years ago for becoming a teacher. She is the second sister. Her whole family is here tonight. They are so proud and I understand there is a third sister going to St. Pete College also to become a teacher. I'd now like to call up from St. Leo University, Sharon Rivera. She's from Junta. She is a math teacher. And she is here supported by her principal, Akeem Young, and Dr. Heather Lynch, her AP. And I happen to know that Dr. Lynch has supported Sharon for a very long time and encouraged her and wanted to make sure that she was among us as a teacher. So thank you so much. From Western Governors University, I'd like to bring up Michelle Rosales. She's from Muller Elementary School. She's currently teaching fourth grade and she has brought the whole administrative team. Delia Gadsen Yarberos here with her. Brian Behrens, the AP. Come on down. And from Anna G. Mendez University, we have Laura Perez. She's from Davidson Middle School. She is now an Access Points teacher in ESE. She has brought, her principal could not be here tonight, Stacy Arena, but she has brought the speech pathologist that has also supported her students in the classroom. And last but not least, Alyssa Ferlita. It was hard to tell in the crowd if we were missing anyone. Hello, welcome. She's from Sullivan Partnership School. She is currently teaching kindergarten and her principal is here supporting her, Kathy Brown. So thank you so much. And if I'm not wrong, your mother is...
She is the fifth grade teacher at my school.
She's the fifth grade teacher at your school. And one more little fun fact about Knights Elementary and the Melgoza factory we have going on here, her mother is a kindergarten para also at Knights Elementary. So the whole family's in the game. Thank all of you so much for what you have done.
All right, everyone, lots of photos. Keep smiling. Ready? Three, two, one. Okay. One, two, three, two, one. Okay, now we're fine. Woo! Yeah!
The next recognition is AAO six, Recognition of University Partnerships of Kenley Elementary, USF, and Mitchell Elementary UT. Sarah K. Bondi, Manager of Human Resources, and Rich Kearney, District Resource Teacher, Human Resources, Performance Evaluation and Clinical Education will be highlighting this recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Perez. Thank you, Elora, and congratulations again to each of our para-to-pro teachers and their school leaders. I think that they represent the best of what we have to offer for our students in Hillsborough County and we are extremely proud of their efforts. Our next recognition continues with a theme of partnerships that grow future teachers, but now we shift the spotlight to two of our schools that have opened their doors and their hearts to teacher candidates every single day. To help introduce this recognition, I am joined by Rich Kearney, District Resource Teacher for Performance Evaluation and Clinical Education, who works closely with our partnership schools and universities. He wanted me to have the spotlight, but it certainly is because of his hard work that these programs are so successful. He's just a bit too humble to want to share the work with us. As part of our thirty-plus elementary cohort schools, two have distinguished themselves as exemplary university partnership sites, providing a consistent training ground for future teachers from Level One through Level Four internships, and that often spans a two-year time period, four semesters. And that leads directly to being hired by our district. So our recruitment efforts and also the retention are certainly supported by their efforts. This level of commitment is possible because of strong school leadership and I must tell you, every time I call, these principals are absolutely okay. We will take anyone you have and their support is boundless. They will do anything and go above and beyond for our university partnerships. We also cannot leave out our excellent mentor teachers who open their classrooms, model best practices, and invest deeply in each intern's development. Tonight, we proudly recognize Kenley Elementary School and Mitchell Elementary School and their university partners who contributed to honoring these two schools and also in the selection of them. Because as I mentioned, we have over thirty cohort schools and these are two who have risen to the distinction of providing exemplary partnerships. As I call the names, would you please join me so that the board and our community can recognize you for your commitment to our future teachers? From Kenley Elementary School and the University of South Florida, we have Principal Jeff Cooley, Assistant Principal Raquel Koikendall, and Mentor Teacher Jennifer Jombroni. I hope I pronounced that correctly. And Dr. Randy Latsky, Associate Professor of Instruction in Elementary Education at the University of South Florida's College of Education.
All right, everyone ready? Three, two, one. Stay there.
And I invite you, any of the board members, if you wanted to visit Kenley and Mitchell anytime and see, again, to see it in action, the support that they provide is truly, truly amazing. From Mitchell Elementary School and the University of Tampa, we have with us Principal Renee Best and Ms. Mary Tankersley, Clinical Education Director and Lecturer in Education at the University of Tampa. And we are also proudly with having Ms. Holly Tankersley, who is the Dean of College Social Science, Mathematics, and Education at the University of Tampa.
I intentionally made sure I stayed on script because I'm so very close to each of these individuals. I knew that if I were to go off script, we would be here much too late and I did not want to be scolded. Again, thank you for your partnership. Not only does it prepare future teachers, it also helps us retain them in Hillsborough County and it is an honor to partner with you in preparing future educators. For our final recognition this evening, we move from elementary campuses to a high school innovation that blends internship and employment in a new way. To introduce our partners and share more about this work, I would like to invite Kristy Gold, District Resource Teacher for Performance Evaluation and Clinical Education, to the podium. And there she is. I apologize, it's a separate item.
Our next recognition is AAO seven, Recognition of Hybrid Internship Model. Sarah K. Bondi, Manager of Human Resources, and Kristy Gold, District Resource Teacher, Human Resources, Performance Evaluation and Clinical Education will be highlighting this recognition.
Thank you for the opportunity to recognize an innovative initiative between Hillsborough County Public Schools and the University of South Florida. While most college majors encourage internships, education is one of the few that requires one and historically, that experience has been unpaid. Although Florida now allows districts to hire College of Education students as full-time teachers under the Temporary Teacher Internship Certificate, USF remains committed to the internship experience as a critical component of teacher preparation, one that provides the coaching, gradual release, and professional support encouraging educators need in their final semester. But the reality is that an unpaid full-time internship places a significant financial burden on many capable students. For some, it becomes the deciding factor in whether they enter the College of Education at all and ultimately whether they enter our classrooms. Last year, Dr. Laura Sabella from USF and I developed a hybrid internship pilot that allows talented USF secondary education students to job-share a full-time teaching position. Two interns fill one vacancy. For half the day, each serves as the teacher of record. For the other half, the student is a traditional intern under the guidance of a clinically-trained mentor teacher. Through Kelly Education, these interns are paid for the half-day teaching assignment and earn more than eight thousand dollars for the semester. While other districts may provide stipends or bonuses to interns, our model offers meaningful compensation while preserving the fidelity of the traditional internship. This fall, two USF Social Studies interns filled a vacancy at Brandon High School through this pilot. Next semester, we are expanding the model. Two interns will fill a Language Arts vacancy and two will fill a Social Studies vacancy in our high schools. The interns chosen for these opportunities are exceptional teaching candidates who have passed all certification exams, have heightened grade point averages, have demonstrated success in our classrooms during their early field experiences, and have interviewed with USF's leadership and our own site administrators. The benefits to both the district and USF are many. The program allows USF to strengthen recruitment efforts into the College of Education, protects traditional internship experience, and ensures teacher candidates receive ongoing coaching as they transition into teaching roles. Meanwhile, it allows our district to fill vacancies with motivated, well-prepared College of Education students and sets our district apart statewide in the recruitment and support of teacher candidates with both compensation and mentorship. Tonight, we are proud to recognize the individuals who made this bold initiative possible. Please come up to the front when I call your name. Dr. Laura Sabella, USF's Coordinator of Secondary Internship. Dr. Jeremy Klein, former principal of Brandon High School, who took the chance to launch this. And Allison Wright, current Brandon High School principal, who supported our candidates this semester. Patrick Bailey, Brandon's Social Studies teacher and the intern's mentor teacher. And Phoebe Henderson, an HCPS graduate and one of our interns from the pilot, who is now transitioning into a full-time teaching position. We also have our spring candidates, Kalia Brothers, Leah Compton, Brooke Ganatos, and Xavier McNeil. Thank you, Board, for recognizing work that is strengthening our teacher pipeline and expanding paid, high-quality pathways that will attract the next generation of talented teachers into Hillsborough County Public Schools.
The next recognition is AAO eight, Recognition Family Friendly Tampa Bay Gold and Thrive by Five. Dr. Charm Patton, Chief Human Resources Officer, will be highlighting this recognition.
Thank you for the opportunity to recognize this wonderful award that we've received. First off, I do have to stop and say, I am so proud that the clinical team that just came up, all are in HR and how dedicated they are to making sure the district has the highest qualified teachers. So I just, I couldn't start without saying that. The Family Friendly Business Award is a way to differentiate your company and showcase it as a place where employees are supported. Family-friendly workplaces attract and retain employees by creating workplaces that care about their needs and the needs of their families. The Family Friendly Business Award, businesses have policies that have a positive impact on employees, their families, and communities. Hillsborough County was awarded Level Gold, I'll repeat that, Level Gold, we're excited about it, this year labeled as committed leaders. This means the district met at least one family-friendly policy, each of the four categories, and received the Family Friendly Business Award Seal and Certification of Recognition. Again, thank you for the opportunity and I would love to have the team come up and take a picture with the board so you can recognize the work that they've done.
The next recognition is AAO nine, Recognition of Hillsborough County Public Schools Well-Being Awards. Dina Marshall, Well-Being Department Manager, will highlight this recognition.
Good evening, School Board Members, Superintendent Ayers. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Tonight, we have some representatives from ETNA who will be presenting this award to Dr. Tracy Schatzberg and myself for the Well-Being Program. We have Jordan Boudal, who will speak for ETNA.
Thank you, Dina. Good evening. My name is Jordan Boudal. I'm the Wellness Manager with ETNA assigned to Hillsborough County Public Schools. And tonight, myself, our team here, we have Renee Hughes. We also have Mike here to celebrate a great achievement tonight. So the ETNA Workplace Well-Being Award is a prestigious national recognition that underscores the importance of employee health and wellness initiatives in the workplace. Companies that receive this award demonstrate a commitment to creating environments where employees can thrive both personally and professionally. Award applications are reviewed by a panel of ETNA wellness experts and are scored based on well-being strategy and design, communications and organizational engagement, workplace programs and policies, and incentives and engagement. In the application, Hillsborough County Public Schools showcased our Well-Being For You Champion Program that is a model for districts around the state. Our champions drive the 226 onsite biometric screening events, 219 mammography bus events, and engagement in the Vitality Wellness Program. HCPS achieved the highest award level, Platinum. We are leading the way with our district's commitment to employee well... We are leading the way with our district's commitment to employee well-being and its innovative program implementation that proves its return on investment. So we would like to invite up Dr. Tracy Schatzberg, General Manager of Employee Benefits, and Dina Marshall, Well-Being Department Manager, to present to them this award.
That looks heavy. The next recognition is A10, Healthy Schools Quarterly Champions. Emma Marie Courtney, Director of Partnership Engagement, Philanthropy, and Outreach, will be highlighting this recognition.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, and guests. Research shows that when people, adults and children alike, have a sense of well-being, they are more productive. Good physical, mental, and emotional health are indicators of a high quality of life. These healthy indicators often lead to lower risks of disease, injury, and higher levels of engagement with the individual's surrounding environment. The field of education has changed dramatically following the pandemic and continues to evolve with many stressors. High levels of burnout exist for educators and students alike due to significant knowledge gaps, behavioral deficits, and challenges with well-being recovery. More than ever, having healthy schools initiatives in place to support employees and students is critical to the success in the classroom and the workplace. On behalf of the Hillsborough Healthy Schools Committee and our valued partner, Tampa Well, activated by Tampa General Hospital, this evening's Well-Being Spotlight Award recognition is of district-level individuals making significant contributions to ensure the district's well-being initiatives in our schools is successful. It is my pleasure to announce the Quarter 1 and Quarter 2 District Level Well-Being Spotlight Award recipients. Ashley Cappucci, Supervisor of K-12 Physical Education, health, dance, and driver's ed. Got to get her whole title in there. And Elizabeth Tanner, Supervisor of Emotional Wellness. Tampa Well, activated by Tampa General Hospital, is grateful for the support of their generous partners to provide a staycation for these two amazing district-level administrators. In addition to this recognition, Tampa Well, activated by Tampa General Hospital, provides a spotlight recognition of student, of one student and one school-based employee each month with a gift card and a certificate. Having partners like Tampa Well, activated by Tampa General Hospital, that invest and recognize our students and employees for demonstrating outstanding efforts to transform the well-being of those around them, our community will truly be the ultimate wellness destination in the United States. Thank you.
And seeing no further business, this meeting is now adjourned.